So I'd like to call the special meeting of November 17, 2015, to order. Would Clerk Colerole, please?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Scharf. Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wolbach. Six present.
Thank you. And I don't see any cards for oral communication, so I'll assume there are none then. So we then go to the special orders of the day, which is the interviews of applicants for Parks and Recreation Commission. And our first candidate is Jim Cowie. And you'll ask Jim to come in?
Yes.
Mayor, are we going to have the other candidates listen, or do you usually bring them in?
You were offered the opportunity to sit outside like the other candidates, rather than in here?
Yeah, I apologize if it's inconvenient, but I really feel like I like to do that.
It's your option.
Thank you.
We request the candidates to go outside, so it's going to be...
Yeah, I know. I guess. I mean, we could ask the candidate, Representative Jex.
Hello.
Hi.
That would make me happy, if we could find out if he or she is.
So Jim, welcome.
Ma'am, hi, thank you.
So we have a few minutes here for your interview, and the rule of thumb here is that we give you a minute or so to make any introductory comments.
Sure.
And then we'll pepper you with questions.
Okay.
So have at it.
All right, thank you.
And welcome. Thank you for applying.
Thanks, good to be here. So my name's Jim Cowie, I've been in Palo Alto for 15 years. I moved here with my wife Liz, with two small children, among other reasons, because it's a wonderful place to live, and with tremendous schools, and a lot of great parks and recreational facilities. We had another child after we moved here. The kids have had a great experience in the school system. We have participated in a lot of the recreational opportunities that the city offers. All three of the children have done that. I've coached for years in youth sports, and am semi-retired from that now, so I've got a little more opportunity to contribute. And I thought this might be a place where I could help you all make informed decisions, help you prioritize, gather information, et cetera. It just seemed like a good opportunity, so I put my name in the ring.
Great, well, thank you for that. And just so everybody knows, all these mics are hot, so a lot of rustling of paper will not serve us well. So who'd like to ask questions? Who want to be first? Corey, was that your hand to ask a question? Okay, Greg Schmidt, Vice Mayor.
Are you familiar with the master plan they're working on?
Yeah, I took a look at that in preparation for the meeting, and clearly it's something that's been in the works for quite a while, and that next year is going to be extremely busy in finishing it, and so forth, yes.
Even aside from that, if you were going to design a master plan for parks and open spaces.
Right.
Where would you start? What are the two or three key things you did?
Well, there are a few things that jump out from the data that has been collected in that process. It's clear that the residents really value having good parks, having lots of parks. One comment that seemed to come up a number of times was, "We need a few more bathrooms in the parks." There's clearly an interest for more dog runs along the way, and it looks like you've considered that, or at least the commission has considered that in recent meetings. And there also seems to be a lot of interest in having more native wild space. And by that, I mean both in terms of the Baylands and Foothills Park, but also in some of the parks that are more urban in setting, having some more native plants and that sort of thing. I mean, all of those things really jumped out.
Good.
Yeah.
Mark?
So first of all, thank you for applying. Right after I motioned to the mayor that I had a question, you started to, I think, maybe answer that question.
Okay.
But you were kind of referencing, you know, the feedback that we've gotten from the Parks and Master Plan process personally, and I don't know if that also allows your personal thoughts, but from what you've seen in terms of your involvement with the parks over the past 15 years.
Yeah.
You know, personally speaking, what do you think these improvements, or what have you seen where you thought, "Oh, you know, I'd have configured this differently," or "Used this space differently"?
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, just, I can talk about yesterday morning, I was out running through Hoover Park, which is in my neighborhood, and I don't know whether it's sanctioned activity or an experiment, but there are a lot of folks out there in the area beyond the Little League Field, which is not fenced today, and I think you all are talking about maybe putting a fence around it to make it, at least in the mornings, used by dogs off-leash. I mean, I think those kinds of ideas are good ideas. I think you'll have to invest in either a cleanup crew or some kind of arrangement with the dog owners to make it viable. But I think there are, you know, other things that we can do to probably get more uses out of the land that we do have. And there's probably some things that we could do in addition with the school district that might also provide synergy to, you know, creating more open spaces that are more usable by the community at large, and not just the kids that are in school during certain hours of the day. Thanks. Yep.
Great, Tom?
Yeah, kind of on the rec side, can you talk a little bit about youth sports and, you know, the facilities, your experience kind of organizing facilities?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I, for three, maybe three or four years for the NJB program, I was the guy responsible for finding gym space for the kids. And that was a real challenge. There are a lot of competing groups fighting for that space, whether it's, you know, tai chi, judo, volleyball, you name it. And there's clearly an opportunity there for more offerings in the community if we had more spaces to choose from. You know, if we maybe used Coverly a little more efficiently, again, took advantage of the really nice stuff that's being built at Gunn, and will be built at Pally as well, there's probably going to be some more opportunities there, too.
So? I have a question for you, which is, I noticed one of your responses was that you're interested in the recent discussion that Parks and Rec had about sustaining trees during times of drought.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if you might expand on that and see how that addresses habitat, whether it's trees or other kinds of landscaping during drought times? Do you have any comments on that?
Sure, sure. Well, we've certainly done an experiment in our own backyard on that front with native plants, with some success and some miserable failure. But it sure seems like there is a strong preference in the community to go with more native species wherever we can, and certainly that enhances our ability to control our water usage. And, I mean, an example where you see we haven't done that very well is down on the golf course, where we've got a lot of eucalyptus trees and other non-native species that fall over every time there's a windstorm, as the water table from the bay gets higher into their roots. And I think that that's probably true in other locations as well, but I'm not as familiar with it. But that's one place where it really stands out.
Do you want to go a little bit further, though, and talk about habitat? Landscaping, does it affect habitat?
Well, you know, I would not hold myself out as an arborist or a landscaper of any skill whatsoever, so, I mean, I think there are things that we could do to bring the landscape or the habitats that you find in our parks more in harmony with the surrounding hills and so forth. But if you asked me to name what the species are, I couldn't tell you. And I would not hold myself out as somebody that could really speak intelligently about it, other than to say, you know, "If that's something we're focused on, I will do the homework and make sure that the people who are coming up with the recommendations and the options are thinking through that." But I, myself, wouldn't bring a whole lot of value to the technical aspects of the discussion.
Nor would I. I just meant in terms of, like, things that buzz and hum and creep and crawl, you know, pretty general.
Okay.
So anybody else question?
Yeah.
Eric?
So, sort of the same thread that got tugged a little earlier. There's a fair amount of contention for playing field space in town, too. Have you got any experience involved in that?
Not a whole lot. My girls played soccer early on, but stopped third, fourth grade, maybe, played a little bit of softball up until about then, too. But then they really moved more toward sports that use courts, volleyball and basketball in particular. But I know that there is a notion of putting soccer fields into the area that's adjacent, well, used by the golf course today, but as the golf courts get relaid out, you know, there's room for multiple fields there. I think it's a great idea. And I think that would alleviate some of the pressure to find space for them.
So you have just about a minute, if you'd like to make any rapid comments?
You know, I don't know that I have much that I haven't already covered. You know, the one thing that I would say is that I will do my homework. I will do everything I can to make sure that you get presented with a complete set of options, well-thought-out recommendations, and I would be very enthusiastic about the opportunity if you chose to offer to me.
Great, thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay.
Go Blue Dads.
Sorry?
Go Blue Dads.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. It's a big night tonight.
How big is the Little Key?
You have people in North Carolina and South Carolina. You have people in... Is any of your family out there?
I have two kids around.
My kids, one of his daughters is...
They're both, and they're both doing road walk. They are. Lucky to have them. Thank you.
So Anne, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much, Anne. Thank you for your application. So Anne Crims is before us, and you know the routine probably from years ago when you did this before? I think I do remember, yes. Just a short bit about myself, and then some questions.
Absolutely, yes. So would you like to start with your comments?
Yes, all I'd like to say is, I have been a resident from Palo Alto for the last 30 years. I have had nine children go through the Palo Alto schools, and I have loved our relationship with Stanford over the years. I've been involved with many sporting events. I did work for the Palo Alto Recreation Department in the '80s and '90s, and happened to have the luxury of having a wonderful boss, Paul Filgen, who said, "You can do any program you want to do, you can build anything you want to do, as long as you figure out how to pay for it." And we were pretty successful in doing that, so a lot of those programs still exist, and I'm certainly proud to have been a part in starting the Palo Alto Recreation Foundation. So I think the short thing to say about me is that I love recreation, I love parks, I like the people that are involved, and I would love to serve the community again as a commissioner.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you for your application.
Sure.
Councilmembers, questions?
I'll go.
Everybody's always got plenty to say, Pat.
Anne, have you had a look at the Parks Master Plan that's going through the approval process?
No.
Okay. Are you familiar with it in any way?
Just a little bit that I have read about, but not anything specifically.
Okay. So at a high level, what areas should we be focusing on in your mind over the next five or 10 years in our park system?
Well, I think making sure that we preserve the parks that we have, and take good care of them, and are good stewards of them, looking for opportunities for partnerships with others, with nonprofits and others in the community. We need more places to play, obviously. We need more fields, because there are more girls playing, and sports are going all year round. And I think that we have to figure out every single opportunity we can to create parks and open space and fields without pushing in on the rest of the community. So it's a bit of a challenge when you're in Palo Alto.
Good, thanks.
Mark, I think I saw your hand up.
I'm having the same problem as last time, but maybe, first of all, thank you for applying. Second of all, from what you've seen, you know, over the last 30 years or so, but a little bit more in the last couple of years, you know, where are certain specific areas where you think we could be utilizing our parks or open space better? Or certain things that, you know, you've kind of seen and thought, "Well, that wasn't really well thought out, or I would have done that differently"?
Well, a little bit with Greer Park, and we're happy that we finished Greer Park. I think that Mitchell seems to be doing fine, as does Rinconada. I just think that we, I guess it's caring for the parks that I'm concerned about. It's the ability to either together pick up the garbage, or make sure it's collected from a staff point of view. And that seems like a really simple thing, but it sends a really incredibly strong message.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I was interested in seeing that there you have been active in fostering a soccer rugby field.
Yes, you know what? That was an incredible project, really quickly. Rich May was a cop who was killed in East Palo Alto. It'll be 10 years ago, on January 7th, and his family was making sure that he did not die in vain, and that youth would have an opportunity to play someplace instead of on the streets. And so that field is finished now, we raised a million, actually 2.2 million, it comes with an endowment, so that it'll be well taken care of, and it is a combination rugby and soccer field. So we're pretty proud of that, and certainly something that's well needed in East Palo Alto. So thank you for asking that question.
We would have a good rugby field. Just one quick add-on, you've done a broad variety of sporting activities around town. How do you see seniors getting engaged in a healthy, active play style?
So, you know that the city was very involved in the 2009 Summer National Senior Games, and we continue to produce, out of my office, the 2016 now Senior Games for seniors. I think that it's really important to provide both the facilities and the opportunities for seniors and for everybody, but for seniors, because they really are an inspiration to the kids and the adults in the community. A lot of people look at the seniors and say, "Gosh, if you're doing that, I can do that, too." And so I think it's great, you know, great for the community. We've been very fortunate to use Palo Alto facilities at Coverly for some of our events, so I see that continuing. And not just for active seniors, but for seniors that maybe should go out and take a walk or whatever, that's a good thing, too.
Good, thank you.
Tom?
Could you explain a little bit, I guess you're currently working at this San Francisco Bay Area Sports Committee?
The Bay Area Sports Organizing Committee, yes.
Explain what that is, and talk a little bit about the board you list as well.
Sure. It was...
Are you there currently?
I am there currently. We have an office on East Bay Shore in Palo Alto. We are a registered business in Palo Alto now. And it was formed in 1985 with the mission to bring the Olympic Games to the San Francisco Bay Area. We tried in '96, we tried in 2000, or the 2012 Olympics, the 2016, and the 2024. I got involved with Baysock in 1998, and since then, we've not only done Olympic bids, but we do international events and national events and regional events, bringing them to the Bay Area. We also support the creation of new facilities, whether it's a Little League Field or a soccer field in East Palo Alto, or a 49er Stadium. And we also talk to children and youth about the importance of Olympic ideals and Olympic values.
And some of these boards, like San Jose Sports Authority?
I am sitting on the San Jose Sports Authority for a very long time, yeah. And the senior games as well, the Rich May Foundation, I am on their Board of Directors. And also on the Olympic Alumni in the Bay Area. I head up the 400 Olympic alumni that live and work and play in the San Francisco Bay Area.
Eric?
You said earlier that a huge priority has to be preserving our existing parks, but it's possible creating more. Is that actually possible?
I think so.
How do we do it?
I think preserving the existing ones is really making sure that we're picking up the parks, that we're keeping the park equipment up to date and safe and all of that. And then I think there are opportunities to work with companies who have facilities to maybe do some shared things. I'd love to see us do a little bit more sharing with the school district. I know we do some, but I'd like to see us open the gyms on a regular basis with the school district. And I think there are other companies who, even though space is tight, who we could do some shared facilities and opportunities.
There are about six or seven questions I could ask you, but you're too modest to say so, but I believe you're an Olympic gold medalist, are you not?
I am.
And with all the activities that you've been involved in, one of the things that you've done successfully is raise funds. Would you find it a conflict, or something that you could do because of your experience to raise funds to help support Palo Alto's parks and open space?
Oh, I would love to raise funds to support Palo Alto's parks. I think that would be really, really fun, because it's so great to be able to show somebody how they can make a contribution, whether it's a financial contribution, or it's an in-kind contribution, or it's something that they can do to get involved and be part of their community. So it's fun, if you're raising money for the right thing, it's really fun. If it's hard to sell, that's a different thing, but I think Palo Alto Parks are incredibly, and Recreation as well, incredibly easy to sell to people. This is a wonderful community, and I feel like, you know, it's been wonderful for a long time, but we have an obligation to our children to continue to make it as good as we can.
And that wouldn't be in conflict with any other board that you're on? It's like, you know, I went to Tom for many for such and such, I can't go back to him for many for parks or any of the kinds of conflicts?
Well, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, and I've not gotten ever into that kind of conflict, kind of thing, so...
Okay.
I don't feel like it's a problem.
Okay, okay, good. And then if we had Tom, I'd like you to delve more into Coverly, but we'll have to say that for another time. So there's about 45 seconds left for you to wrap up, if you'd like to make any... Oh, Corey, you have a question?
Real quick question, what was the sport in which you got your Olympic career?
Swimming, that's what girls did then, toward Title IX, and all of that. We either swam or played tennis or did track, but much better in the water than on dry land.
What stroke? Kind of opposite, terrible swim.
So all I'd like to say is, it would be an honor to serve again. I totally understand if your choice is not to have me serve, because it's always great to have more people involved in all of that. So I specifically, I'm glad, Mayor, that you asked about Coverly, because I was one of the original Coverly Master Plan writers with Paul Filgen, and I have always loved that facility, and would love to see us do something really, really remarkable with it, or make it continuing remarkable, so.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate your application.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. It's nice to see all of you as well.
So, Sabell?
Yes.
We're taking you out of order, as Judith isn't here yet, so thank you for being flexible. So you've heard the routine, so you have a minute or so to introduce yourself and make any comments that you'd like to open.
Right. So I'd like to be on the Parks and Recreation Commission, because as I outlined on my application, I do have a lot of ideas that I'd like to see happen. Briefly, I could say about the entrance to the swimming pool off of Mitchell Park. Instead of going all the way around, if a nice entrance could be made, then the community could use it in the summertime. I don't think half of the people know that it's available for open swim in the summer, and it's just kind of just not with it, you know? You just don't go there, even though we do like swimming. And I'd like to focus on what the Foothill Park, basically. Coverly, I know that there'll be a lot of deliberation about that and about the use of it, and it's probably more than just park, it's also the building, so I don't want to address that. But addressing Foothill Park, I'd really like to see a place where families can bring their children to swim. Something not concrete, not chlorinated, where the wilderness is surrounding the children, the sky, the trees, everything that they can love, and they can make great memories with their family. So, you know, that's my statement. I did submit it in writing, but I'm just kind of ad-libbed here.
Great, thank you. Tom, question?
Did you follow the conversation about the 7.7 acres in Foothill Park, and do you have an idea of what you would use that space for?
Well, from what I've heard, that previous and this evening, and the two interviews, is that there is space needed for fields, and maybe the high schoolers could go up there and use the field, make it a field for them, I don't know. I've never seen what it is. It's locked off with a gate, as I understand. And so maybe that's a place that would expand the fields.
Mark?
Thank you for applying. You mentioned the idea, which I'm intrigued by, of having maybe some pool facilities in Foothill Park. Are you...
Not pool. If you are familiar with Spring Lake in Sonoma.
Spring Lake.
If you are familiar with Spring Lake in Sonoma City, County, I recommend seeing it. They've just channeled a little bit to the side of their creek, and they've made a safe, wonderful place where people picnic, swim, and they just make those memories, and they just have that fresh, natural environment to swim in. And it's something from my childhood, from Massachusetts, that I can never put aside.
Thanks, and I misheard earlier, and now I'm going to have to find a new question, so come back in a minute.
Keep on your feet.
Too late.
Vice Mayor, you have a question?
You mentioned Foothill. You also, in your written material, mentioned café or something?
I have some trouble to hear, if your voice is very soft. I apologize, but that's my situation. Too much loud music.
So café up there, what kind of...
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
How would you see that?
Well, I had the opportunity of being up there just three days ago or so, with my husband, walk through Restoradero, love that. Restoradero is used quite a bit, but I feel Foothill Park could be much more of a resource for our families. And so I mentioned to the ranger, I saw the Coke machine or the drink machine, and it's run by the city, and I said, "Hey, how about an ice cream machine for the kids, you know? That would be a treat, that would draw the children up there." So whether a café might be unreasonable on a seven-day thing, but you could have food trucks, like you had at the art exhibit the other day. Maybe once a month or something, there's going to be a food truck, something to bring people from the community there. And enjoy more.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Pat?
When you were talking about the JLS Summer Swim Program, and it surprised me, because is that currently a city-run program?
Yeah, I think, well, at least it was. You could buy your ticket of 10 swims, and you could go around, but I can go there, but I don't do much. But I can go there, because I know the back way that all of they come into, through the school and all that. But most people don't see it, they don't know.
Well, it seems like the point's well taken, because I thought I was pretty tuned in.
See, you don't know.
It's a new news thing.
Kind of high school as well, it's really not advertised.
No, it's just not obvious. And you really could do something with it, so that it be used for Mitchell Park. And most of my ideas don't cost anything, by the way.
So I have a question about, will you finish, Pat?
Yeah.
So I have a question about something that rarely gets mentioned when we talk about Parks and Rec, and that's the Winter Lodge, where ice skating happens. Do you know if that's, is it utilized enough? Is it not publicized enough? Is it, what's your view of that resource?
Okay, I think they have some trouble with people using it. I think it's a great resource. I think if it could possibly be kept up, and I don't know how you, I haven't given any thought to how you increase usage of that, I really haven't, but I don't have young children anymore. Maybe if you could offer for young children a special rate, so that it would be even more affordable, and that might be a way.
Okay. Corey?
Yeah. Since you're talking about Foothill Park, it occurs to me that one of the reasons it's maybe less utilized, actually a couple of reasons it's less utilized than, say, a Restoradero Preserve relating to access. Obviously, Foothill's Park is restricted, at least at the main entrance. People can come in through other entrances if they're not Palo Alto residents, but the main entrance is restricted to those residing in Palo Alto, or they're guests. And it's also further away. guests. And it's also further away, a long windy road to get there, which for many people is an obstacle to access. And I was curious if you had any thoughts about either of those aspects that may get into Foothill's Park more challenging?
Okay, so we enter quite often during the week. We will park at Arastodaro, and the parking is getting very tight there. I noticed something was roped off for special events. I didn't know why it was roped off. If it wasn't a special event, that would be a way of extending the accessibility for there. And you can enter through Arastodaro, but then by the time you get there, you stop and refresh yourself at the center, and then you kind of feel like, oh, I'm not gonna go, you know, further. But when we do drive up, my husband and I, when we do drive up to Foothill, we often take one of the most challenging trails, which is the, what do you call that thing?
Lost Trancos?
Lost Trancos, yes. Lost Trancos. I noticed the bees are up there, and that's a bit of a problem. But the hiking there is something, I think, is quite incredible. I mean, it doesn't compare with Redwood Forest, or Hutter Park, but the oak, oak savanna, whatever you want to call it. I think my husband thought he saw a mountain lion one time, was so excited to see the tail. I don't know if he did, because I was with him, and I didn't see it. But that accessibility is, is a question. I, I don't have a definite idea. If you wanted to open up somewhere off of Portola Valley, that could somehow, but it'd be expensive.
So, thank you. You have just about a minute to wrap up, if you want to make any closing comments.
Thank you. I just really appreciate being able to be here, and interview, and the whole process seems very good. So I just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for applying.
So Karen has it Winter Lodge Sunday. There's a line of about forty kids waiting to get in.
Oh, really?
I think it's used a lot.
Yep. The last time I went, it was really crap.
I'm guessing you're David.
I'm David.
So David, we have, as you could tell, we have ten minutes for the interviews, and we give applicants a minute or so to make any opening comments that you wish to, and then we'll pepper you with questions, so fire away.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying.
I've been here for thirty years, thirty-five years. We've raised three kids here. We've gone to countless weekend and afternoon sports team events, and, and we watch, we volunteer. We have, we hike and bike all the open spaces, and love them, and continue to do so with our adult kids. And I think that with my history here in the city, plus my volunteer activities, plus my thirty-five years as a project manager and business analyst, I work pretty well with teams. And I think also, I have many good ideas for improving the parks, and keeping them, encouraging all of Palo Altons to use them, even as our population increases. So I hope that I can give back, and with this particular committee, and I've never done this before.
Well, we're a pretty friendly lot, so just, just be yourself here. So councilmembers' questions? Pat?
Thanks for coming. Are you at all familiar with our Parks Master Plan that is going through the system?
Yes, yes.
And can you share with us any thoughts you have on where it's going right, where it might be going wrong, or need more emphasis anywhere that...
Yes, when you talk about walkability, and, and the ability for a lot of different groups to be able to use it, I think immediately to the Music in the Park, and the Chili Cook-Offs, and the, I just got back from Paris a week ago, and the way that they walk and use their parks is an incredible model for, for us. I wish that we could get more people into the parks. And then the same thing is true when I went with the city council last year to Oaxaca, and you see the town squares, and how often, how with music and with dance, they get people into the parks. And so if there's any way that we could have more events, like Music in the Park, or the, the movie nights at, at Foothill Park, that would get more people in, I think that that would be a terrific, terrific thing for the, for the city.
Greg?
Potential conflict. Let me see how you do. You want, we all want more people using the parks, yet we want the parks to be a special place away from city life. Would you be in favor of opening up like a cafe out in the Baylands, or in Foothill Park? Or would you increase the parking at Arastodaro? There's a little part that's roped off.
Yeah.
How would you think through?
Right.
That trade-off?
Right. I think increasing the parking in Arastodaro is not a bad idea. And I've gone to the, I think there's enough room for that, and it does encourage more people to go there. Having a cafe out at the Baylands, I know from experience, I go to the Shoreline Lake all the time, and they have many, many people using that lake, and using that, that, that restaurant. I think you already, you have a restaurant already at the, at the golf course that nobody knows about. I don't know, I, I would tread lightly with that. There's a lot of trash that comes along with, you know, an espresso bar, or something like that. And then as far as up at the Foothills Park, I've debated in my mind over and over again whether to open it up to people other than Palo Alto. And I realize that you can't, you can't stomp on open space, because one of the things in the master plan is you want to preserve, but at the same time, you want to open up. And so that, that conflict is something I think about all the time. And I guess I feel that more people in Palo Alto should use it, and therefore I probably wouldn't open it up to the world right away. I would prefer to get more people from Palo Alto to use it.
Tom?
You talked a little bit in your application about Cubberly. I wonder if you had some ideas, you know, if you had a magic wand, like how would you use that space?
Yeah, yeah. It's near and dear to my heart, because I live right behind it, and I, I walk there every day. And I am so glad that they didn't cut down all the redwood trees, and they didn't take away the track. Many people use the track, and many, many people use the fields on a weekend. We can hear them all the time. I think it gets plenty of use. It only has one bath.
My question was, if you could rebuild it, what would, what would you add or change?
I would add a bathroom, that's for sure. I really like the track, and I think that the fields are used, so I'm not sure how much I would change. Now, if you want a picnic area with trees, and, and a playground, I would take out the parking lot and not disturb the fields. So I would expand it, if I could. If you need to put a double-decker parking lot, fine with me. But having all that open space for parking is, I don't think it's that necessary.
Corey?
Just a couple of questions. One, on getting more Palo Altons up to Foothill's Park. Do you have any thoughts about how to do that? Also, you, you mentioned all of the open space areas in Palo Alto. A couple of them aren't managed by the city of Palo Alto. You have Los Trancos and Montebello, but they're within Palo Alto city borders. I'm curious if you have thoughts about the job that, that the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District is doing, managing those parks? And, yeah, so I'll, I'll leave it at that.
They're doing a fantastic job, and I, I, I love them. I haven't used Los Trancos. I, I walk down to Los Trancos from Foothills Park down, down there, but, but Montebello Ridge, we use all the time. We hike up to Black Mountain. It's fantastic. And so, I think that if you could get more events that are targeted towards a specific group, like the summer camps, or the movie night, or something like that, that's more, that's managed, and it not just, I mean, if you're, you're asking, should I have a shuttle that runs from downtown Palo Alto to Foothills Park, I'm not sure that's economically feasible, but maybe if we had an event that was up there, star parties. I've been to star parties up there. They're wonderful. But, but not many people can get up there. So if you had shuttles up there for that event, controlled, I think that would be great.
Eric, you have the last question.
Unless you had some involvement with AYSO and so forth.
About thirteen years.
Yeah, okay, so, so, you know, there's a lot of demand for planning for that space in Palo Alto. What are, what can we do better, if we were to manage that, than we do now? How can we get better at that?
I, it, that's the toughest one. It's very popular, and it's good for the kids, and it's managed, and so I would encourage it. I think we don't have lights, and so after school in the, in the fall, when kids are practicing there after school, if they, you know, could go another hour or two, then, you know, you get more use out of it. But you need some lights. And actually, the kids don't need that much light. But it's a tough one. There's no more land. So I do have some thoughts about planned community PC, along those lines, but you, you have to ask me about that. So anyway, it's a tough one. It's a tough one.
So you have just about twenty seconds for a quick wrap-up.
Let me just add briefly about planned community. I, I'm, it makes me sick at heart that we can't take more advantage of the PC zoning. And with no more land, it seems like we need, if, if we could get more open space from the developments that are going on, like the one across the street where it's from wall to wall to wall to wall, and there's, there's no benefit to the, to the, to the population for these buildings that go up to the edge. And if there were some way that, that we could get some of that land back, in the form of small parks, or, or get some compensation to improve the park, like, like I was saying, could we get a double-decker parking lot, so that we could take some of that concrete and make more fields? I would love to, to make recommendations for, for options that, that the planning committee could have for PC, that's visible and useful, and, because I think we've been giving them away too, too cheaply.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for applying.
Okay. Thank you.
Confirm, we have two applicants?
Three. And you are Judith?
I'm Victoria.
Victoria. Okay.
There's one person who didn't come, so that must be Judith.
That's right. Had to be one of the other of you.
Exactly.
So Victoria, thank you for your application, and for joining us this evening. And so the routine is pretty standard, so we have ten minutes for an interview, and it actually seems to be adequate time to get a lot of information out. So you have about a minute to make opening comments, and we'll ask questions of you.
Great, okay, thank you.
So welcome, and thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Victoria Thorpe, but I want to say thank you for giving me a chance to share my experience, and why I think I would be a good addition to the Park and Rec Commission. I moved to Palo Alto about eight years ago from San Francisco, and immediately was struck by the amazing amounts of open space in the parks here. And I have two kids who are now eleven and thirteen, but eight years ago, they were little. So I got a chance to go to all the playgrounds, and swim at Rinconada Park, and then I've watched them play soccer at Party Park, and Mitchell Park, and go hiking in Foothills Park with my dog, and with my kids, and it's, and watching a tarantula crawl on my arm at the Junior Museum classes. And so I've really appreciated both the physical space, and then also the great classes and recreational opportunities that exist in Palo Alto. So about a year or so ago, I went through the Leadership Palo Alto Program, and actually with Rob DeGuss, who's the head of the Park and Art Department, but, and was able to really kind of get this bird's eye view on the city, which I really appreciated. And it built on some leadership work I had done at Addison Elementary School, where my kids went to school, and both, also on the Partners in Education Board that I was on for two years. So I really find it, the sort of more bird's eye view of what's going on in Palo Alto really interesting. And about a year or so ago, I started a website called Palo Alto Pulse, where I write about kind of hidden stories that aren't being covered in mainstream media around Palo Alto, about people, interesting people, things, and ideas that are going on around town. And one of the things that interests me about being on the commission is, it kind of gives me a chance to hear about things that are going on that people might not know about, and share them with the community. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
You're very welcome. Councilmembers' questions? Corey?
So you mentioned Foothills Park, and we actually heard from a couple other folks today, not surprisingly, about that park. It's obviously well-loved by many in the city. What do you see as things that we could do to improve services at Foothills Park, or to improve access to Foothills Park? It's obviously physically quite removed from the majority of the city, and that's either, you know, treacherous and difficult bike ride?
Yes.
Or a long drive. And for those who don't bike or drive, it's, it's difficult to get to. But anyway, thoughts about access or services for Foothills Park?
Well, on the access issue, I think you named all of the obstacles. I mean, I don't think you could do anything beyond offering some sort of shuttle service. I mean, I don't know if there's any other way to get up there. And part of what makes it really special is that it is sort of removed, and you feel like you're kind of in a little patch of nature. So I, that's what comes to mind immediately, in terms of that. I mean, I'm sure, sure there would be some demand for that, if you had some kind of, probably on the weekends more than during the week, some kind of shuttle service up there. In terms of services, I mean, I'm always torn, because I kind of like the, I like the old-fashioned feeling of that park, you know? And we've done, taken the canoes out, and there's, there's a sort of lovely, just unstructured element of being there. We've gone on some of, with my family, some of the Ranger Lut hikes that are really fun up there. And I know that those always sell out. And, you know, one thing that, I think from a services point of view, if you had maybe potentially more of that, you know, like fun to have someone show you where the newts are after a rainy day, and stuff like that, that you might not do on your own. You know, I've done, I've gone to a bunch of school picnics and events up there, and, you know, I, I guess it could be refurbished, you know, like with picnic tables and things like that. But I, I like the way it's kind of unmanicured, personally. So that's my two cents about Foothills.
Great. Thank you very much. Eric?
What do you like about Burgess Park that you think we ought to do to Rinconada?
Oh, Burgess and Rinconada, I could have started on that. Well, I know that they have very different models, because Burgess is run by, especially the pool and all that, is run by an outside company. And then they had a lot of outside, you know, sort of private funding that really drove a lot of the remodeling, and how that park has come to be what it is now. I don't know all the details, but that's my understanding. And I, you know, I love Palo Alto, and I just, it, I feel like you go to Rinconada, and it, Rinconada Pool, and it's that park, and it feels like this, like sad little, you know, stepchild, or like neglected little, you know, youngest childhood, and get the great experience that their little neighbor, that the neighbor has. And so I just, I think that, you know, starting with the pool, the locker rooms, I think kind of disgusting would be the word I would use. It's inadequate in terms of facility for the volume of people that are there. It's such a, it seems to me that there's a lot of space you could use, and just to re-envision how the pool and the parks go together, and I know this is part of the master plan that the city's working on, so I'm not trying to say it. I'm coming up with something that, obviously, very smart people aren't already thinking about. And including the Junior Museum and all of that. So I, you know, now when you go to, when you go to Burgess Park, there's this sense of physical facilities, buildings, that really... of physical facilities, buildings that really tie in really nicely to the outside space, and I could see something like that at Rinconada Park, where it would feel like you were using the space in order to potentially have more of a community center feeling there, with them into a recreation space, as well as the, using, you know, re-envisioning what the pool looks like. Although, I have to say, just small, that cloverleaf pool is kind of a genius design, so it'd be lovely to keep that somewhere.
You're not alone, by the way, in your comments about the locker rooms for the women at Rinconada.
Yeah.
Tom?
Yeah, I actually think they're working on those locker rooms now.
They are.
So, actually, I had a kind of similar question about Rinconada, so you talk about the Junior Museum, which I love as well. If you were on the commission, how would you trade off desire for the museum to expand and use up some of the parkland in Rinconada Park?
Well, I've actually looked a little bit at some of the stuff that they've, that they have drawn out. I don't know how baked any of that is, but I did look at one provisional plan that they had put together, and to me, it's all about how do you, you know, how do you integrate it so it feels holistic? Like, there's a playground that sits right outside of the Junior Museum right now, and I think you could integrate that into the Junior Museum, so even if it's using up some of the park, that the trade-off might be that you have a better flow in and out, you know? This is more space than there's available at Rinconada Park, but the Discovery Museum in Moran has interesting ways that they use indoor and outdoor space that feels kind of integrated to the learning environment, and also invites kids to come in and out. And I could kind of envision something like that, where it wouldn't be so much like, "Oh, we're giving up the park and giving it to the Junior Museum", but we are envisioning a way of using the space so that it feels like it's all part of the same inviting kind of environment for kids to come and learn.
Pat, did you have a question?
Just any other thoughts that you have about the Parks Master Plan and pro or con?
Well, I, I mean, I'm pro looking towards the future and coming up with, you know, ways, envisioning everything. I think that's what Palo Alto's in the middle of doing right now, so I wouldn't say like I could be, I'd hate to ever be on the record saying, "I'm calling the master plan." I don't know all the details of it to say, you know, one way or the other, if I think exactly the way it is right now is, I would imagine, is, you know, perfect or something, but I would imagine it's gonna change. One of the things I've been talking, emailing with Rob about is I wanna share the idea with people. I went through that process of prioritizing, you know, what do you have fifteen dollars to spend or something? And I found that really interesting. You know, it's like anything else, everybody has great ideas, but once you're forced to make choices, you know, it becomes more clear what your priorities are. So, I don't know how many people have done that yet, but I think it's really interesting, and it's something that everyone who uses the park should go through, so they can kind of see that it is a finite set of resources that are gonna be applied to a lot of different spaces.
So, Magical Bridge Playground opened this year, and I'm presuming you've been there?
Yes.
And is that a kind of facility, or some aspects of that, that we should incorporate into other parks in terms of accessibility and inclusiveness? What are your views on that? Do you think it's feasible, economically viable, necessary, we need to do it? What are your feelings about that?
I, yeah, I know the people who are behind Magical Bridge, and I think it's like an incredible story of grassroots, you know, activism and engagement, that they got the, you know, worked with the city to get the land, and fundraised a tremendous amount of money to put that amazing facility together. And, you know, when you talk to people whose kids are in wheelchairs and have disabilities, physical and, you know, mental issues, it is the accessibility in the regular parks in Palo Alto is limited. So, I think it's something to think about. I mean, one of the things I was struck by when I moved to Palo Alto from San Francisco is the homogeneity, homogeneity of the playgrounds in Palo Alto. And they're sort of, I mean, they're a bit boring, to tell you the truth. And, you know, Palo, San Francisco's gone through this process of, you know, investing park by park and really changing, and I, I'm not saying that Palo Alto has the resources to do exactly what the city's done. I think they actually brought in some private money to offset that. But they're kind of fun places to be. They're imaginative, they're different, each one's a little bit different, they have different kinds of place structures, and so when you say, like, that's what I found at the Magical Bridge Playground, I was like, "Oh, this feels like a San Francisco playground in the sense that it feels really engaging and for kids who have disabilities and not disabilities." I mean, my kids, even my eleven-year-old, who barely hasn't gone to playground in years, was really excited to play there. So, I think the accessibility issue is something now that that Magical Playground has kind of opened up for people to be really putting on the forefront of planning, but in terms of design, I think there's a lot of imagination that could be brought to the playgrounds, if that is something that's open to consideration, depending on resources.
So, we have just, literally just moments for you to make closing comments, if you'd care to make some, and thank you.
I just wanna say thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you, and, you know, as I said, I, I think it's exciting Palo Alto, and it is a really interesting inflection moment of growth and change and looking towards the future, and I would welcome an opportunity to be able to support the city's journey as it moves forward in terms of parks and recreation.
Thank you so very much. So, councilmembers, that concludes our interviews for Parks and Rec. It looks as though we have one candidate who didn't show up, and so, we are adjourning this meeting.